This conference will now be recorded.
Joining me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the daydreaming there Brendan, that I stood up for.
All right, welcome everyone again. First item of business is to approve the agenda of the during changes. We have a motion in a second for approval. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Do we have any conflicts today or?
Yeah, I have a couple, Mr. Chairman, number five on the nine o'clock, number six on the nine o'clock. And I prepared the documents for both of the section line vacations, so I won't be participating.
Okay, anyone else in the conflict? Need to approve our regular meeting minutes from May twenty-third. Everyone have an opportunity to read them.
Most approve the best minutes I read all day.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the best minutes in the United States. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Travel requests, any? Okay, personnel?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the step raises for Jack Hune and Kendale Shane as presented.
Okay, we have a motion in second for approval of the two step raises. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Auditor's account with the treasure.
I have two more.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, I have a cell phone stipend for Travis Love effective on five twenty-five, twenty-three and amount of a hundred and four dollars per month.
We have a motion in second for approval. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
The motion to approve the increase to the under fifty dollars a month for the state's attorney's office. Along with some Harvey Adams, Matt Sinsel, and so on.
Second. Okay, motion in a second.
What does that do for them now? Is that give them a better phone or what does that do?
It gives them twenty-three dollars and eight cents per paid period to go to their cell phone bill because they use their cell phone. Several, and we have probably fifty employees that have cell phone stipends. Some of them are a hundred and four, some are seventy-five a month, some are fifty a month. Theirs were forty-five and they're just bringing it up to fifty.
The hundred and four guy get a lot better phone or?
They're deputies.
Deputies?
Yeah, they're the deputies and they're on call twenty-four seven, so they get a little bit more towards theirs. We used to pay their bill. They used to have phones through the county, so instead of us paying for the phones, we just gave, we moved it to giving them a stipend instead of us buying the phones because then they have two phones. They got their work phone and then they got their home phone. So we just eliminated that and gave them a stipend.
Sure.
Thank you. For a while when we used to use your own phone theoretically, you had would have to have your cell phone bill audited to show what was personal calls and business calls. So kind of to get that separation gone towards just paying folks have their own plan, right?
Okay, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion before us, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. What's your pleasure on the bill?
I had some questions. Since the registrar of deeds was here, Tyler Technologies, which is twenty-two-three-two-one-six-nine on page seven for seven thousand thirty-five dollars. Is that an annual or? And then one more if I may, Mr. Chairman. Vendor that I hadn't seen before. Many haha juvenile detention, nine thousand dollars. Do we have somebody in there facility? Ninety-six hundred. It's two-one-one-one.
Yep, there's a deal there. Being held by Judge, Judge.
And will they be extradited to our facility in Rapid?
I don't, I don't know what the status is. The defendant, they've been there for twenty-seven days. The unit price is three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents. Their invoice nine thousand and change.
That's much higher than we pay in our cooperative agreement, right? So about two-seventy-five a day.
So yeah, I'm not sure. I don't know the circumstances. I'm sure they'll try to expedite it.
Thank you. So would he have been arrested and so falls in? And that's the difference.
I'm going to assume probably was, yeah, was taken into custody there.
And then I notice on the, every month we seem to have about twenty-five thousand dollars in court-appointed attorneys plus the budget of five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for the public defender, which gives us a grand total of roughly eight hundred thousand dollars while our state's attorney's budget is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is there a reason we're seeing a surge in the court-appointed attorneys and we're not taking those in our department?
They recently hired the, the, the third attorney down there, and so I think for a while we'll check on our signing cases otherwise. That's, I cannot offer a great explanation.
But the states.
Conflicts are an issue.
Yeah.
So in other words, yeah, conflicts, if there are multiple defendants, they could have a defender's office, although they have pre-attorneys, they could only take one of the defendants in the car. The other two defendants would get separate attorneys, right?
But, but the state's attorney does much more than court. They have to listen to everything and handle a grand jury. They have much more responsibilities than public defenders. So their budget should be larger, not equal to.
Yeah, I can't make any arguments. The state's attorney's office handles all the criminal cases, all the A and N cases, does grand jury, does all of that.
Well, it just appears to me that maybe we need to get rid of the public defender's office. We're all hired out because it's dysfunctional and not cost-effective the way it is.
I, I can add something to that. They also bill for the public defender fees, so we do get money back to, to plant their budget.
But we would with, and would with the court-appointed too, and then we have to collect that. We have to spend time collecting.
That comes through a different department, but yes, that is the same, same.
Well, that's about one point two million dollars or more, actually one point six million dollars that we're spending a tax figure of money on that department. That being said, I move to approve the bills as presented.
We have a motion in a second for approval of the bills. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Now we're up to you Brendan. Auditor's account.
This is on the May forty-first, twenty-twenty-three, public company bank. So it's sixty-eight, eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-eight cents. Included in that total are the Collier Bank, five million dollars, the bank balance of twenty-eight million, six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and forty-nine cents. The US Bank account, which is our construction fund, thirty-three million, four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-two cents. Money market, one million, six hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-seven cents. The actual cash, ten, one thousand, three hundred and fifty, checks and drafts in the treasury possession is seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty cents. Amount of cash in the treasury's possession is six thousand, three oh four, forty-one. Petty cash is two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five, or a total of sixty-eight million, nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-five cents.
With approval of auditor's account to the treasurer. Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the treasurer's report. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Okay, request by McPherson Auction to close parking lot, June fifteenth and sixteenth.
So Thursday and the Friday in conjunction with the auction that they've had, similar request from just passed. No problems ever where?
It would also include Saturday the seventeenth, that is actually the auction day, but there would be some traffic disruption as usual coming out of the parking garage, going to the mall. Yeah, and then up to the concert hall and back. So it's three days, not just two.
Well, the seventeenth is a Saturday, so technically it's not under our control, but it could impact, you know, sheriff's office and so forth, but I think we've worked it out in the past, haven't had any issues whatsoever.
But then.
Thursday really, for this particular auction, Thursday's really kind of a quiet day. It's more of just a setup for us in the garage. Friday's a check-in day and then Saturday's the activity day for the auction itself. So Thursday's pretty quiet, Friday, Saturday.
I'm over with the requests.
Oh, yes. We just take the ground load.
Treasurer, do you mean a motion to approve this request?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Not object, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Thank you, thank you.
Folks, okay, all right, take care.
It is great, yeah, great chair. You're up, great cost of Indeed dot com job advertisements.
Yes, sir. Um, I've, I've been working with their, their team to get, get an estimate of what the cost would be. There are for every, for every ad, there's not, they don't have a corporate account where you pay like a flat rate per. But, you know, I estimated somewhere in the neighborhood based on the, the, the number of individuals who potentially could hire within a given year, to be somewhere in the neighborhood of about three hundred dollars. And that would be, it would fluctuate each year depending on how many people get hired. There, there are no cost options through, depending on how, how you intend to advertise it, but if you use the no cost options, they don't have the visibility that the ones that there is fee require, but the typical cost per, per ad is right around sixty, sixty to sixty-five dollars. They can be as much as a hundred and fifty depending on the way Indeed does their, their billing is of the, the description of the position that you're advertising. So if it's a position that's high demand, they charge one for it. If it's in low demand, based on their, their demographic research, it costs one. So, you know, no, no two, two advertisements for, for positions would be the same. If I had advertised money in my office or say, or advertised money hers, there could be some disparity on the cost of, for it to be advertised at.
Brendan. So I know that I kind of started this situ, this request. Is there a savings by doing it, by having a membership countywide over the departments doing it independently?
I can't say there can be a savings, but from to, to manage it, yes. It would be much easier to manage it and have some uniformity.
If, if we did do it, would you put it in your budget or would we put it in the commission budget?
I, I, I recommend just since it's a technology resource, we'd put it in my budget and just try to forecast what we would have each year.
So would we get through this year the way it is, just having each department do it and make the change next year?
We can't. I, I, I did not because there hadn't been no action for the board yet, not for getting a management yet, but I certainly can on the adjustment because we're, we're really enough in the process.
Have you talked at the department head meetings to see if that would be what?
We haven't had a meeting since the topic came up.
I think, Mr. Chairman, that we bounce that off the department heads and if that's the way we want to go, have Greg put it in his budget.
Okay, well, we have several in here, so.
I can certainly reach out to everyone and, and just get some feedback from them. I think, I think there, there'll be a positive response. I think that if they have a better option for, you know, getting applicants, I think that they would be on that.
All right, is this a regional or a national scope?
It's national scope.
And, and several departments are using it now.
Yeah, there's been a few that have been, yeah.
They just do it independently.
Have good response for it too. Drive your scope.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
CSC, MOU. E D C, Deweyville. Sure, come on though.
So I guess what this is, if you're not familiar with it, it's an e-recording vendor. We currently have one, which is simply filed, so I'm simply just adding a second e-recording vendor who approached me and asked if we would sign them on. It doesn't cost us anything to add them on, um, e-recording. What e-recording does is it cuts out the mail. So we're not mailing stuff back to them. They're not mailing it in, cuts out the time of the mail, cuts out mailing fees. If they mail it in and there's an error in their document, I don't have to send a rejection letter, send it back to them, then they fix it, mail it back in. So it cuts down time drastically. Easy to make fixes is when it's a little quick, you just email back to them or reject it. They fix it, send it back sometime within ten, fifteen minutes or a couple of days, so. If you have any questions, all.
Brendan, so this is the one that has trouble with large-sized documents. Does it reduce them? So you can't read them?
Um, that's any piece of mail I get. A lot of times when even the title companies are printing them, when they, attorneys email them to them, they print them from legal down to letter. But yeah, we do address that too. But technically in law, I can't adjust it. Unless it's not legal.
Move to authorize the chairman to sign your document. Okay, sorry, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I'd like to amend that motion to follow registrar of deeds recommendation.
Thank you very much.
All in favor of the amended motion, will say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Insurance committee. Who's leading that one? Brendan, you?
You want to start with the?
I only want good news.
It's all good news.
Okay.
So we had an insurance committee meeting two weeks ago and our letter from Walmart was here and went over just kind of our annual, our quarterly report. And through that quarter of the report, she has brought to our attention that we can offer our employees what's called a Medicare type of supplement. It's not offered on the market. It's strictly through them and it's basically when an employee turns sixty-five, they can choose to use this as their, their Medicare supplement. This is part of something that Walmart is offering.
And the cost would be to the?
To the employee.
Former employee and or their spouse, right? Because at that point, they're no longer typically on county insurance at age sixty-five, right? And so the cost of the county would be administrative, right?
Well, it actually wouldn't even be administrative because they would just, we would refer them to them and then they sign up through Walmart.
Unlike the ICAR, which would be more labor intensive.
We were just wondering if that was something that you would be interested in allowing for us to offer to them once the employee turns sixty-five.
I'm on Medicare and that, and I've never heard of a type five per F, so I was anxious to see what, how to say our insurance agent has much to say about it. And so I was, I'll make a motion to move it to the budget hearing, so I have no more time to research.
So you want to present it at the budget? Is that your?
Do we have a second? I'll second it for the sake of further discussion, Brendan.
So there's no cost to the county? So why defer to budget?
For time. That's your sleep with just like a little more time to research it and see what it entails. And I mean, we've got time, right Brendan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, some of us turn sixty-five in a month, so we don't have time.
I went past that a long time ago.
So right now, if you turn sixty-five between now and budget, you have, you cannot go out completely off the county insurance. You don't have an option to use that.
I guess.
I would make a substitute motion to, to allow this offering to the type F.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a substitute motion in a second to go ahead and allow this to happen. All in favor of the motion, will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
And then the other part of it is during our department head meeting, we talked about needing to offering the employees a, a vision benefit package. And so I reached out to the city of Deadwood and they used the S P. I also did a poll through the employees to ask them if we would offer this at being paid strictly by the employee, it's not matched by the county, would you be interested in signing up for it? We had fifty yeses and twenty-six no's. So we would have, you know, not quite half of the employees would, are interested in it and are very excited about it. I just, I didn't want to, you know, I think we would look at doing it starting effective January first, like all of our other plans, if that would be okay, which, uh, so the, the prices for the whole employee paying their part would be employee only is right now is sixteen sixty-nine, employee plus one is twenty-six seventy-one, and this is per month. And then employee children is twenty-seven twenty-seven and employee plus family is four to three.
Mr. Director, I have a question. Did, did you anticipate the county would participate in that payment? So it'd just be an auction for them to purchase that?
Kind of like they do with F LAC, if they want to be part of F LAC, it's, they pay the whole thing.
Okay, what's your pleasure on it?
I know that we allow the employees to participate in the S P program.
Yes.
So second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you all very much.
I think we're up to the sheriff's spot.
I have nothing to support.
Oh, come on. Everything's just totally smooth?
Been a good couple of weeks.
I got you, Brendan.
Wow.
Yeah, I know. Well. Do you agree?
I agree.
Brendan agrees.
Do you have a project update for us or anything?
I'll do that. I, I shared the, the update, I think from the last meeting, it's twenty-five and staff are on site today. They moved last night. We're up early this morning on site. They did plan to come in here, but they're part of their routine checks. There's a lot, lot going on up there. You haven't been up there to see it.
How about line item one forty-six R on five twenty-two, twenty-three on this report?
Thank you. Well, we'll leave you alone.
You know, I'm enjoying these.
For your public hearing, resolution twenty-two-three dash thirteen, a resolution order to vacate a section line.
Roger, are you here to talk about that one as well?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I'll.
Okay, so at eight twenty-four?
Well, that clock should be twenty-five.
Well, how about I say eight twenty-five? So we're right on time.
Yep.
I bear waits. One minute.
Let Roger get seated.
Take me a minute.
Yeah, take your time. Yeah, oh, now it's good.
Good morning. This petition is, as it suggests, a petition to vacate a couple little stretches of section line that runs through Spirit Fish Mountain development up there east of Spirit Fish West of Whitewood. We've approved plating. Lot sales have been going on. The section lines are not improved. They're not part of any road system. They just, right now they run through, through property owners' property and so we're asking the county to vacate.
I assume you have a reputable individual doing the service.
Well, yeah, depends on how you define reputable.
But that was hard to find.
I should be, I should be careful. He's sitting right behind me, so.
Okay, this is a public hearing and at this time we'll open it up to the public for any comments for or against this resolution. If you wish to speak, please stand up, state your name and address to the record. Seeing none, more time, anybody else? We'll close the public hearing and off with the board. This is completely internal to the subdivision?
Yes.
And I could point out Brendan that my calculations are correct. I believe it involves a stretch that runs east and west of about, would be three quarters of a mile. And then a stretch that runs, that intersects with that, that runs south with.
I think, Roger, I think on there, I'm kind of pointing up the screen here. Is this a new row that was put in, kind of starting at, was it at the, by the park in Whitewood that now accesses the property? Is that, no, it's not it?
No, it's the property. It was off the old county highway.
Okay.
Okay. What's your pleasure?
We're almost beat up at once.
Well, I can't make the. You tell us.
Yeah, I can make a second.
Did you second it?
Yeah.
All right. Always a problem, vacating sections. All right, we have a motion in a second for further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Mr. B, sir.
First of all, Brendan, did you get these? These are agreements for the two fifteen percent additions to those grants for?
Assigned copies.
Assigned copies from the state. You got them already? Very.
Thank you for asking.
I got some approach and utility permits to present today. The first one is Willston Basin. This is a, this is one that they brought before us a few months ago and we had asked them to to try to get their bore deeper under the, under the lookout mountain road and they were able to accommodate that as best as good. They went from, I think it was from seven, seven point six feet to ten point nine feet at the center line of the road. So that's, that's apparently the best they're going to be able to do. This is also on that unimproved section of lookout that we don't currently take care of. It's, it's closed. We're just concerned more for the future development. I guess they've done everything that we've asked of them, so I would recommend that we do that.
We'll be following recommendations. Move with all recommendations. Second. Yeah, we have a motion in a second to follow the highway system that is recommendation, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Uh, the second one is an approach permit, and this is for Chris and Shelley Ewitt, Ewert, and this is on the Lookout Mountain Road for a piece of property that they had just purchased, there's currently no, there's one field approach just at the very southern end of that property that doesn't really access their building site, and plus it is right next to the current driveway there, which is Sunset Ranch Road, so their proposed location would be, as you can see on this map here, it's five hundred and four feet to the north, site distance is good, it's thirty-five mile an hour road, they got plenty of site distance. There will be need a culvert, and they're gonna have to do a little excavation or to lower their property to the height of all of them. If they if they do all that, then I would recommend we approve that as well.
Okay. Move to follow the recommendation and approve the permit as presented. Okay, we have a motion in a second to follow the recommendation, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Uh, the next one is for Mister Richard McKee, this is a this is for a an improvement of an approach that already exists on the Meritasus Road, he'd like to improve it, it it actually runs across Forest Service property, I've contacted the Forest Service, and he has also supplied the documentation, which I didn't send you guys, you don't look at it, you can't send a phone book. He has all of the permits in place to to use this property, and the Forest Service agrees that anything that's done within our right of way should be our our approval. The the approach is already there, the site distance is good, it will need a culvert as well, there's nothing there now, and for him to improve this, uh I would like him to have a culvert in there, so provided that the Forest Service doesn't come back within the next, I guess, two weeks, they haven't they haven't contacted me since I talked to them last, they said to give them a couple of weeks, and I haven't heard from them, and it's been a week. So I would approve that we uh go forward with this pending the the notice from the Forest Service.
Okay, Commissioner David.
So why is it going to commercial, residential, or commercial use factor?
This is not going for commercial, residential, this is just an improvement of an existing Forest Service trail, we're on number line four there.
Oh, four, okay.
This is not going to commercial, he's just wanting to improve.
This is the one that goes back to its place.
Yeah, he's got property four hundred feet in there, and he crosses Forest Service land, and at this time, Forest Service says they have no issues with it. And as as long as it's in our right of way, I I I think we should approve whatever is our right of way.
Move to follow the recommendation with the condition that the Forest Service doesn't object. Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second, further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And then this is the last one, this is one you're just referring to, this would be uh for the for the Casey and Hayekio, and this is off the Nemo Road, this is for a wedding venue, I believe that was in front of the planning and zoning.
Those got shut down.
Hmm?
What if that? The one that got shut down?
It's a different one.
This is a more.
Oh. Uh, it came to me, and it I don't know for sure the status of it with planning and zoning, um, the the approach is already in place, I'd like to approve it with or without the approval of the wedding venue, just because I am wanting them to raise the uh the existing approach, it's pretty steep up the Nemo Road down into this this property, and it either way, if they improve it, um, it would be, it would raise that, would make it more level to our, a little better for sight coming up. The site distance either direction is fine for the mile an hour, but uh it's just pretty steep coming up onto the Nemo Road, and I'd like them to 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 level that up, so whether or not it goes to a commercial application, that I guess that would depend on if it was planning and zoning passes, I don't know if they pass this.
Yeah, we.
We did that one. I would recommend.
May twenty-third.
I would I would recommend approval of it.
Move to follow the recommendation and approve the commercial approach. Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. That's it for approaches, I put in there a little bit on some uh some updates on the bridges, uh, that you need to have any questions about any of those?
Mister Chairman, I had a question for you, first of all, this is very helpful.
Yes.
Good deal, and it saves some time, but but is it possible, like today, we had three bills we paid for the D O T? And I don't know what bridges they are, is there any way that you could summarize the payments on here, so we know what bridges we're paying for?
Sure.
Because the numbers in there don't mean anything even on the invoices to me.
Yeah, I can do the best I can, some of the invoices they've been sending, I gotta tell you, they're kind of confusing.
Exactly.
But I can, yeah, I can dissect them.
I don't want to give you too much work, but it'd be very helpful.
While it's still fresh in my mind, uh, does the the state, D O T, set the counters up for you when you do a count on a road, or do you guys do that?
We do our own, I noticed that the state.
There's one up on Home State Road.
Yeah, that's not us, we took ours down, we did that earlier, uh.
But I mean, that's a county road, why are they doing?
I don't know, I'm not even sure who's doing it, honestly, I've seen them in several locations, and I saw them up there, it's a red, South Dakota D O T band. Yeah, well, then, they're doing it, but they're not doing it on, you know, for anything that we're asking of them, I I'm not sure.
Huh? Do you mind? Pardon? Do you mind?
Yeah, maybe so.
Commissioner David.
I think that they do counts in several places on county roads, and they have a database, we've we've gone into that before and got traffic counts for them and from them and the Forest Service at different times.
So I just thought it was unusual.
But I, you know, I'll I'll check on that one.
And then just another heads up that we just started our chloriding program last week.
So.
If I get phone calls.
Sure.
Where did you start? We started over in the Whitewood area, which we completed yesterday, we're done and out of Whitewood, moving over to the Saint Oni area, working our way back towards Spirit Fish. We had a little late start because of some of the rain and stuff, so.
Are you, you won't be on Home State Road this week, will you?
No, in fact, we had a conversation this morning about the Home State Road, and we might push that off, but you know, that road's holding up real well, we might, we might wait a little bit later towards the end of our chloriding season to see about doing that, if not.
Not just curious to get a haul of that cattle out of there.
No.
Right, last last year, when we were hauling, we guys were maggot in.
Yeah, at this time, the plans were to kind of wait on that one, that's one of our fresher gravel roads, and it's holding up pretty well, so we're gonna make, push that one back. And we also, we had, we we chlorided a few roads that we have never chlorided in the past, we, I think we talked about this a few months ago, maybe we're we're gonna cut back on some of the chlorine on some of the roads that we do a lot, a lot, there's just a lot of buildup in the in the road itself, and we're doing a few roads that we've never chlorided, just because they're troublesome roads for washboarding and pottling, and we're gonna try this to make, see if it helps us keep them roads in better shape, so.
Okay. It's a good idea. See, we're probably down to Mister Hoffman.
I uh.
Go ahead, Richard.
I I had some more for John, if you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do Mister Hoffman first?
No, go ahead.
Um, I I believe we had a letter from Mrs. Everly, and I believe she lives up there on the Home State Road there, just before you go cross those two narrow spots.
Okay.
And she was wondering for one thing about siding, there, I was wondering if there could be a little more uh signs there going slow down narrow road or something like that.
Okay.
Just about got a stop there, putting somebody on that, it should. The white out, because there's not hardly enough room for two of them, same width.
We'll look into this.
Okay. Thank you. You know, Randy?
I, you know, a follow-up on that would be, I'd be interested to know the total width of that between those two guardrails, to see if it qualifies as a two-lane or a single lane.
Well, we did measure that when this uh with the mining thing that's going on out there, we measured at twenty-one feet.
So that's really tight.
It is pretty tight, yes.
It is, yeah.
We put the guardrail on to make it safer, and made it narrower. It is safer.
There is far off the road.
Yeah, I know, it's just a tougher, unless you put a lot of fill in.
Richard, was that Everly letter, I think that was one of the letters that was submitted as part of a gravel discussion, is that right?
Uh, that was one of her comments, yeah.
So John might not be aware of that, I don't know if I shared it, it's a ceremony.
Oh, I see. But I I tend to give this to Mister Sleep, that any kind of heads up we can give people on that, because if you meet something, even a camper out there, it's pretty darn now. Narrow bridge add or something. If you go through there with a piece of equipment, why you're in trouble, because you can't get that much speed up.
So you know what it's dangerous when you're going through there with a swat.
Yeah, that's true.
Are we down to Foggelson Road now? John?
I believe so, I have nothing else unless you guys have more for me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, go ahead, Bruce.
So Mister Hoffman has submitted a petition, as we discussed, at a recent meeting pursuant to thirty-one twelve twenty-seven point one, to kind of put together a standardized plan, so that others in the future use it. It's sort of, yeah, as it said standardized, but you have that in your packet, I think, and then also included in there for your consideration is a proposed agreement, obviously pending your approval, and most importantly, probably, is 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 John did a a cost estimate of the work involved as well. So those are the prenecies of information that I would.
Okay, uh, John, what's your feelings on this, are you in in support of this?
Uh, yeah, I mean, if we're, if if it's gonna benefit somebody's property, if they're gonna have a home site there, I mean, it would be, it's our own, we've always we use it occasionally for our own uses, we'd never take care of it per se as a as a as a plowing or or graveling or anything like that, but if if we can benefit somebody on this, I guess, you know, it wouldn't be that much more work for us to take on another fifteen hundred feet road. I don't, I don't think it would affect our our plowing or or our workload.
And obviously, you've come up with the cost estimate, and you're okay with that on that.
The cost estimate I have put together was, you know, originally, we we put together, I think, the first time we brought this up, we talked about a cost sharing program, and since then, I I don't know where we are with that. When I I put together the whole cost of of uh the, well, originally, it was a half a mile, now we got it down to the three tenths of a mile. I am still sticking with the six inches of gravel, uh, just because the road is, we have very little gravel on it now, and to to put just a four inch lift on it, I think we would lose some, and I think it would just come back to haunt us down the road, so I I gotta stick with that, and we also, I think, if I remember, you guys had sent me out there to meet with Mister Hoffman to come up with maybe some ways that we could could cheapen this up. We talked about building to our standard versus what it is now, part of the road where it meets up to is only twenty feet wide, so you know, we can narrow that up and save some money on some gravel and things like that.
Mister David.
So you're putting the six inch lift on, hoping to maintain a four inch compact?
That's correct.
Because the bottom inch is gonna be.
This is six inch compacted, this number, six inches compacted, but the first two inches, I, it just, they always kind of go into the to the base.
Even if even if you scarify it all.
That's right, I mean, it's gonna, it's soft muddy dirt out there, and it's gonna suck up two inches of gravel easily, if we just put four inches on it, it's not gonna two or three years down the road, we're gonna get complaints that we did a horrible job.
And then you're running it all the way to the east end of the platted property?
That's correct. We originally went another two tenths of a mile on the on the uh on the proposal, but after talking with you gentlemen, you you had thought that I should meet with him and come up with a way of lessening the dollar amount, and that of course, is one way to lessen the dollar amount, is just to do less less mile.
Because there's no building rights on that remaining property.
That's correct, that's what you guys are telling me then.
Yeah, but when they got the plat approved approved on the forty acres, there's no building rights.
Okay.
Thank you.
Further discussion? But this is a minimum maintenance road now?
Yes.
And will, so you'll move that into a maintenance?
Well, I mean, if we're gonna do it, I gotta tell you, I would, I would recommend if we're gonna do this, that we we pick the maintenance up to the next fifteen hundred feet, because I gotta tell you, if there's a home site down there, and if we turn around a plow truck at at this driveway here, and these people are watching that, we're gonna get a lot of phone calls, be a lot of complaint with them, I I it would it to me, it just doesn't feel right to leave somebody stranded there in a in a snowstorm, we don't plow there that much as it is, it's it doesn't get that much snow, but when there is a lot of snow, I would feel pretty horrible to leave somebody stranded.
Uh, Commissioner Sleep and then Commissioner David.
Uh, I was I was just wondering, a lot of times when you upgrade a road, there are people that uh go in different ways when it is it's good, you know, after you fix it up, we're gonna have a tremendous more, much more traffic on that road than usually used to be.
I don't feel there will be, I mean, it's only it's only another three tenths of a mile, and it turns still another mile of impassable road after that, and there's nowhere really to, there's no side roads off of it other than this property, so I don't believe it will increase traffic there.
Commissioner David.
Will will you post minimum maintenance somewhere on this, like at the end of the work or before that?
Correct.
So we have a sign that says minimum maintenance?
Yeah.
And then maybe county maintenance ends or something?
That's what we have on there now, is county maintenance ends, it's the the sign that's up is only county maintenance.
And I think if you had a sign at the end, county maintenance end, and maybe one earlier that said minimum maintenance, it's gonna give them a lot more heads up. Maybe not get down there and can't turn around.
Minimum maintenance would require you guys to make a resolution for minimum maintenance.
Okay.
It doesn't require a public hearing, but it does.
It's occasional use, right?
But we can do that, for sure.
I mean, it's really what we want here, isn't it?
Guys, we're only talking a matter of minutes, or we think they're out there to
Yeah, but.
Take care of it.
But I mean, for the remainder of the road, I would like to see it.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, even if it was posted a little early, then that that limits our obligations on the remaining piece. And it fits the definition of intermittent traffic.
Well, I guess I'm confused, I thought it was minimum maintenance now.
It's county maintenance ends, county maintenance ends.
Yes.
I would suggest that sign was put up before the statute changed to allow us to have minimum maintenance, because it's been out there a while.
Okay, well, we can deal with the remainder of the road at a later date, but uh the Hoffman, do you have anything to add to this, or you're in agreement with your application?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Anything further from the board?
Uh, Bruce?
Mister Chairman, as you can see in the proposed agreement, that amount of twenty-four thousand six forty-four thirty-two cents, as proposed by John, is an amount not to exceed. Uh, if there's any savings, it might not exactly be that amount, that's probably the worst it could be, and as the agreement contemplated, if you're in favor of it, that that amount will have to be paid before the county would be obligated to go forward. And I think that, I think that they know that.
Okay, Commissioner David?
I have a question for legal counsel. If we approve this, does that mean, for example, I can come in with my public right of way, a petition for improvement, putting that on on the system? Under the same pretext, it's not on the county system now, it is on the county system, no, the one I'm talking about, the future. Is there a significant distinction between those that are not on the county system and that are?
I think this statute, that we're working with here, uh, presupposes, require that in order to get county road, and you're talking about a separate matter, which would be pursuant to thirty-one three six through nine, which would be to add a road, I think, to the county system. That's the petition process, right?
Yeah, thank you.
I think that's a different.
That's who I understood it, so thanks very much.
Okay, further discussion, I have just one more question for now, uh, I think last time, we first started talking about this, you mentioned there was a culvert.
No, we just needed to get it covered, it was exposed, and we already approved his approach on that property, and before before we would uh, I felt that we should fix that, at least cover it before he started going in there, but so we did that, it didn't last very long, it it pushed out quickly. There's just nothing there, but mud, so I think the landlord, Mister Hoffman, had to go up there on his own and kind of cover that back up, so he didn't have to to do his approach, and I'm not sure if the approach has finished, it's something on there. Can't get in there yet, so. Anyway, uh, we did that, but the the culvert itself didn't need replaced, it just needed covered up.
Definitely.
Is it gonna, is the gravel going to alleviate that problem, or is that going to continue to be a problem?
No, I think the. No, I think the gravel will take care of it. I think it just needs some sort of structure. Right now, it's not black dirt. So, so if we get some decent gravel on there, it'll, it'll fix it up.
John, will the crown help?
Oh, absolutely.
Mr. Hoffman?
Or is my proposal, I don't remember, I would go to that, that is, were you asking for a shared costing map or?
But, so I think the idea, um, was that was an amount to exceed and we're gonna talk to John about some tree removal and things like that. Um, but it have to be under the county's sort of supervision and, and approval, right? Statute really contemplates that the county does the work and builds you and or hires somebody to do the work. So, but that is the amount not to exceed.
So does that mean that we pay all of it to the county?
Well, that looks like that's the way you just wrote up.
Yeah, well, that's what statute would require, that, that, that the county would get an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand six hundred forty-four dollars and thirty-two cents.
Did you not understand it that way? It did, uh, it says, it says you're gonna pay it in here is the way I read it.
Yeah, and that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page.
Thank you.
So we need to submit a check to the county for that amount? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right.
Give you a checkbook with it.
So, so if we, uh, if we approve this and they ma- make the payment and John has some savings, would they get a rebate?
I think that's unfair.
Yeah.
Is that your intent, John?
Absolutely. I would do this as cheap as I can. I, I don't wanna do any more than extra, or, you know, that's asked. The only thing that I wanna make sure that I say is, you know, that, I know it's been talked about different lifts of gravel and I, I still maintain that we need to put six inches of gravel on there. Cause I don't wanna come back three years and be told I did a horrible job and look at it, it's a mess. I wanna make sure it's, it's good enough to withstand.
Oh, I agree with your six inch lift.
It's two inches of base course as well, right?
No, no, it's all, it's all, it's all six inch.
I'd do two, I would do two three inch lifts is what I would get.
Yeah.
And it'd all be one inch base course. We've done larger rock in the past. If there was more gravel there now, I would do some, some fill with some larger rock. But the problem with that at this time is there's nothing there. But dirt, if we put larger rock and four inches of, of, of base course on it, your larger rock will end up on the top. And it, it, that's also a concern.
Randy? Yeah, I agree. I think the six inch is necessary.
Yeah.
Cause there's no gravel on it.
That's what we've done on every other road that we've started from scratch.
Okay. Looks like everybody's in agreement. Jan, is there a checkbook? Question would be authorized chairman to.
So. Okay, we have a motion. I'll second it. Any further discussion? Seeing that all those in favor of the chairman signing the document and getting the project going, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, opposed.
Motion carried.
Thanks, you guys.
Yep.
Chairman, can we have a bit of a break here in the absence?
Absolutely.
One other quick deal though. I, you did see I had a guy retiring?
Yep.
Or you, I wanted to make sure you guys understood that we're gonna.
I assume you already started your.
We started advertising. His last day, you know, was on the twenty-sixth, but he's got some accumulated time and he's leaving earlier. So, there might be a little overlap of when we're still paying him and we start a new.
Yeah.
Understandable.
Matt?
We're gonna take a short break here. Roger, did we have something else to do?
I've got something under Amber's agenda and something beyond that. So, I'll be around a little while.
All right.
This will use your, if you don't mind.
I was down High Hill Trail a couple of weekends ago in the mud.
We're just gonna do one Bruce.
What's that?
Just one of these.
There's just one.
Sure.
Now, if there's any savings, John will.
Yes, and then. Oh, thank you.
Just show that man over.
Right.
Did you check on that session?
I don't have a camera.
Somebody was.
Because it's.
Right, there's no campers there. Not a one, they're gone.
This is, that's over the old range.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Because when I was out there, it was quite a long time ago. But if you see where the maintenance ends?
Yeah.
That's actually where.
Okay.
So if somebody's added a half mile.
I am.
Three years ago.
You know, yeah, I have, I don't know.
So I didn't know if that was, how they did that back then. You know, I, I don't, I don't know what happened there. I'm gonna make you chop this again.
Are you good with your first?
I'm good. I'm moving stuff. How you doing?
Twenty-four. Yep. Just one. You be, yeah, one county, yeah.
Well, I'm sure you, I know your.
Six, four, four.
I've, I've accepted my position in life.
Right. This is the time we have to. Very equal we wait.
Yeah, for what we're like.
Maybe I'm giving you this because I got too much to keep track of.
What is it?
Well, it's in plaid, I think.
Oh, yeah.
Whatever one they pull.
Yep.
But you know. Well, even a lot of to it. I'm gonna stop. Oh.
Oh, yeah, she didn't say.
That's all it was. I didn't want to affect the process.
I think it'll just make it better.
Oh, I stopped in Amherst. So they, I don't mind. Hey, we're, and I'm trying.
No. You can head it out.
No, we are.
Just so everybody knows.
Are you serious? He's planning on that property?
Yep.
I just asked, uh, his wife about that. Cause that was concerned before and that's.
That you're applying for it.
Not a reason for, for fixing the road.
Should you do? Yep.
You have the sweetened cherry. It's nice enough.
Cheaper.
Yeah.
I don't have the application yet, but he's already been calling me outside.
Do you know that?
I didn't.
So he didn't realize.
He doesn't, he doesn't.
It's not two minutes yet before.
Try to light, try to lighten load.
Oh, I'm sure it is.
Looks good.
I agree.
Richard, I emailed.
Couldn't have said it better myself.
I said John made an email from Liz Heverly's.
Oh, okay. Now she had some concerns there.
Right.
I know that's been mentioned by several of the people out there.
They ran over the side and loaded horses there one time.
That's right. Did any horse not get hurt?
I, I think they have, I'm not sure. They, they got them out. I don't think they're all done killed. I had a tourist stop in the middle of the highway in front of me and saw one, one mare in a stock trailer. And I locked it up. All I heard was just. It's in front of the trailer.
Yeah.
So I pulled over. And she was okay.
She's still low.
All right, let's start with. Uh, well, do you want me to start with flats or you wanna start with updates?
Go ahead and do your updates for the flats.
Um, well, I think everybody is aware that we're having that onsite gravel pit on, on each place that we can. Um, we set out directions on where the earth is. And from the last meeting, we'll go through the majority of the flats today. We will be seeing a development plan come forward for KR Development, KR Deer Mountain Club, um, which is, uh, we'll say the portion of the master plan that's kind of getting the board to tell now for Deer Mountain. That's gonna be coming up in front of you, June twenty-seventh. We had a change of zoning request that will go public carrying July sixth, so you won't see it till the end of July. For a property located a lot. Highway five, pretty, like right where the President's Park is, on the other side of the piece that we have. Like to change that into the storage unit. So it'll be right on that highway, highway service official. Um, you're also gonna see the old Apostolic Lutheran Church, which is off Old Bell Road. They're looking at subdivide the half twenty acres that they have, um, and try to break off the existing church building onto the old piece. And then possibly build a bigger building on the back piece. It's kind of their, yep, but it. It's suburban residential, part of that, all over across the street there.
Does that gonna affect their taxes?
I'm sorry, not suburban residential. It's, um.
Not only because there are taxes in. Yeah.
They might go add to suburban residential, sorry. Um, it's about twenty, it's twenty-six acres, so it's a parcel that doesn't need extra zoning anyways.
Commissioner Driver.
So does that include their cemetery in that twenty acres?
Yeah, that's everything. Yeah.
Why would, and do we allow cemeteries in suburban residential?
Yeah, they're fine. It could happen that way if you want to. You just have to show them like the map where it is.
And file.
Yeah.
So, why would they jump clear to suburban residential?
Because it's the only one that a church is allowed to send out.
So they have a non-conforming use?
They have a non-conforming right now. Well, at the time that it was done, churches were probably a conditional use. It looks like it was a C P joint power, like the joint.
Oh, yeah, when you have both cords.
Old ones. And we can't find any records. So I, Spirit Fish has searched, researched, we found the one document that shows it had a C P by that joint, but we have no conditions with it.
What's their C P?
It's a huge, it's a.
It's, so it's a C P system? So that, that would keep them from going under two acres?
Yeah, yeah. So, that's just kinda where, where that one's at. Um, and then I guess I, I can't really give much update on the two public carings for the gravel pits. Because all they did was end up continuing until they had the onsite and then they got continued to July sixth. So I'm assuming it'll be sometime into July, August before it gets before you guys is, I just don't have a date yet or anything.
Commissioner Driver.
You anticipate this room will be big enough for that, the lowest public carings?
No, we just rotate people in and out and we've been getting through it.
People will be standing in. But, so that's kinda where we're at with that. Um, I guess in the room, it's good, just so we don't forget, we do have an employee is here. Amy is sitting back here. So she, yesterday was her first day, so she came down this morning just to kinda watch and see what happened. So this is Amy.
Mr. Chairman, shouldn't she get up and introduce herself?
Sorry, she's here. I'm here. She's gonna get thrown into it this week.
You've been here a day, you're up to speed, right?
Not at all.
You made the new guy from equalization coming on his very first day.
Yeah, so I, I gave her a day. But, so she's here and, um, she's gonna get thrown into it because flats are due tomorrow for July, so. We're getting there, but that's kinda, I guess, updates wise, that's really all I have.
All right.
Okay, so the first flat is the layout plan, um, lots one through six of Trucky. You guys have seen this once and at that time, um, you had asked the same thing that the planning and zoning board had asked originally was, what is the Forest Service access that Kirk Mountain Road, kinda what's going on there? Um, the Forest Service has talked to me. They aren't really gonna say it is or is not their road, the normal. But they did provide this, and this was dated February second, twenty twenty-one that they gave to the LLC. Um, and planning and zoning looked at it and said that this was at least, they felt comfortable that this at least showed something from the Forest Service. Um, it, it says it is a Forest Service system road or jurisdiction across private properties located at Forest of Escondre's. Um, it was in the width of the easement granted to us. They required the easement, it looks like in nineteen eighty-two. And they provided it as a copy of the reference. It was a sixty-six foot, three-three B on each side of the center line. I don't know. So I, they, they basically felt that this, at least, we have something that shows there was an easement there. And that's Kirk Mountain Road. So, I don't know if this is what you were looking for or not, but this is what we're looking for. Um, and so with that, planning and zoning felt that it was enough to get going, at least to do a preliminary and final plan move forward. So this is still the layout plan. He wanted to make sure on your guys' aspect that you didn't need anything else.
Thank you, Commissioner Driver.
Well, it's really good news that they have that eighty-three document. Richard remembers in the seventies and eighties, Forest Service started acquiring those driveways. So it's nice that they've got that right away in record.
Yeah.
It makes it very clear. The question will be, and I don't think we have to answer it today, will we sign the, uh, plat on the highway authority is not applicable?
And I think what Bruce was thinking is as the plat comes through, he would, we would want you to make that motion. So we knew going, you know, what we were gonna do to the.
Do you need a motion on, any action on this today?
I think you guys have been usually just kind of, it's. Yeah, it's, you've got it both ways. I don't, it's more so so they know, should they go forward to a preliminary.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, a very similar question to Commissioner Driver. Just trying to understand the right of way of the question. And do we have authority then to grant approaches off of that vote?
No, we would.
That would be the non-applicable.
That would be why you would wanna submit it non-applicable, I think is kind of what we.
They have a process, right? Yeah.
But I, I would, I would suggest that we let the minutes read that, that, uh, the board acknowledges that the Forest Service easement does exist on the layout plat. And in lieu of a motion.
Okay.
Mr., I'll second it. Further discussion?
I mean, so. They're gonna have to get some kind of driveway permit for us to step up. I just.
I don't know.
I, I personally don't wanna see one, two, three, four, five, six. I don't wanna see all, a bunch of driveways up for that. I mean, there's already one now that goes in behind everything. And I'm sure the Forest Service.
Yeah, I don't know how to control that because it's not our.
Well, it's part of the plating process. So if we're approving the plat, we should be able to dictate whether, well, but the, again, the Forest Service may have to issue the permits.
Yeah.
So.
So I don't, I, that's, that was my concern in the staff report when I started writing it originally was, well, would, you know, it's gonna come back to me because they're gonna wanna building permit. And they're gonna say, well, my driveway's right here, but I'm not permitting that driveway.
Commissioner Driver.
Well, I think Commissioner Flanagan brings a good point, but there is an individual, I'm trying to remember his name, that's in charge of permitting those approaches on portion of the roads. So they do have a process. Um, you know, we might let the minutes read that we're concerned about this number of driveways and we'd like to see them consolidated.
I mean, I can see the force, when you've got an access here, that's gonna service this one and this one that runs up here and it might serve that one.
Yeah, and they could come in and turn into those two so they could even dedicate an easement there. We can require that. But they dedicate an easement here, here.
They had it on one of the layout.
So it served three lots from the existing easement.
They were coming off the existing driveway like this.
Yeah, you'd come in and you'd take a right or a left.
Possible? It seems to be quite steep there.
I, I don't know if it's. I think that'll come out at. I think that'll come out at preliminary Platt. And then the other one could be a cross from the other one there. And that would service two lots.
We can just relate to, I mean, I'll relate back to it, but there was a bit of a discussion about that, so they should look at possibly doing some shared driveways.
Well, maybe what they could do when they submit the preliminary Platt is do a sketch where they're proposing the driveways as an exhibit.
Commissioner Lee.
Yeah, I'm concerned looking at lines there, it must be pretty darn steep. In there that, should they even be building there? They're out there, but lines are pretty close together there, and so it's gonna be pretty steep up there. I'd be concerned about that.
Okay. Well, I think like Commissioner Diver said, during the preliminary, we'll be able to have further discussion and on all that.
And, and they have already submitted their fire plans, so they're currently, they're, they've already done that and they're working on it.
If we have a motion in a second to approve the layout, any further discussion?
The motion was to add those items to the minutes.
Yeah.
To acknowledge it.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So the next one is Yak Ranch, which is. Across the road from Kirk Mountain Road, so you're going behind the, um, existing subdivision of, well, kind of Centennial Estates area back behind it there on the other side of Kirk City Road. And this one, it's a lot line change. It's just two larger parcels. Um, it's a portion of the Riley Wolf tract and the southwest quarter and the southeast quarter. And then the southeast quarter to southwest quarter, and what they're doing is they're moving the lot line between the two quarter quarters, so as part of that, we said. It'd be best to be platted, so that's why they're plating and just redoing. Um, I think it was just the two neighbors, one wanted one thing and one wanted another, and there was a fence involved and all sorts of stuff, so they're just kind of cleaning it up, so. In the end, we'll have a seventy-six point five one zero acre lot and a forty-three point five zero acre lot.
Mister Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
So the whole story here is they had three parcels, one on this side of the railroad, one on this other railroad, one near the, where they abandoned railroads, so there's actually three lots there. Fourth lot here, fifth lot and sixth lot. So there was actually six parcels there that they're consolidated into. So this is a good consolidation Platt, so it's not only a lot line revision, it's consolidation. And the deal, the thing was, the, this gentleman wants to acquire a certain part from his neighbor. Based on a pasture that he wants to use, that's what it's all about. So this is a consolidation Platt, that didn't come out of planning zone.
So do we need, is it exempt then from the fire plan?
Yes.
Like the motion would be exempt?
Okay, there's a second?
Second, second.
Just like, this is just a layout.
Oh, it's just a layout?
He's just showing, he, I think they had already started the work and decided, wait, let's make sure we don't need any issues, and it was based off of access they were concerned about. But they have the, it originally runs right through there, so I didn't see an issue.
Yeah, we don't need the exemption.
Okay, so we're not.
This is just a layout for reading your properties today. Yep. So it's just if you had any concerns on anything.
I would do, move to acknowledge layout flat and with the understanding that's a consolidation and a lot line revision.
Second. Okay, the motion is second.
Just to be similar to the last motion.
Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Gives them a certain comfort.
Uh, Amber?
Do you have a, on Bourbon Valley? So this one, um. This has kind of gone back and forth a few times. This is the Bourbon Valley, uh, Rocky, Rocky Johnson Road, which is. Way out off of. Highway three eighty-five, and then you go back in there towards Roway Lake Road, and it's way up in there, off of Roway Lake Road. Um, and this one has been kind of gone back and forth. There is two existing structures out there. There's a house and then like some modern buildings, and they want to build another house. But ultimately, they're trying to subdivide it down into six lots. Um, the landowner had, I've had some back and forth with the Forest Service as well. Um, on, this is another one of those scenarios who's gonna sign the Platt. And there is some discussion on, we're seeing a little more involved in this, this is the road situation. Um. But ultimately, there's been a couple documents which I did provide you. There is an M O, well, there's some emails in there from the Forest Service. There's an M O document, that's one of yours to talk about. Um, they have done the fire plan. And I think at this point, the one thing that came up. That I don't really know how to deal with is, Forest Service did notify us that there is a. Covenant, no, what am I thinking of?
I understand.
Yeah, there's a.
Oh, conservation.
Conservation easement on there that kind of makes it seem like they shouldn't be subdividing it, but I don't think we get to enforce conference legal, that's a, that was an easement.
We're not party to it.
I don't think we're party to it at all.
Yeah, but I don't. Yeah, it's a conservation easement, they can't. It was a forty year conservation easement starting back.
But I don't know how we dictate that because it would be too much.
Conservation easement, that's not for everything. This one was set forty years by.
Forty years.
We dropped the Bible from rather.
They can set the term.
Yeah, so it's, I don't.
Forty years is up?
No.
No, I think it's about ten years into it.
So that was, and I know that they're here too, so they might have, that just kind of came up though, that conservation easement. And then the MOs, you want to talk about the road at all, or how do you want to deal with that?
Well, so in, in advance of the planning and zoning last meeting, I talked to John Bay about the Rocky Johnson Road. He had done some research, and so for our purposes, the Rocky Johnson Road is not a county road, distinguish that from like the Goudat Road, which looks similar, but. Uh, Rocky Johnson Road is not a county road. And he also put on the state website and wrote a check to make sure with them that they didn't have it listed as a county road, and it's not, he's quite confident in that. And so we, we brought that up, uh, at, at the last meeting, and I think, uh, he gives the applicants, the owners, the contact with the Forest Service and receives some correspondence from the Forest Service. And he needed that Forest Service at least considered it to be a county road. They'd even given it a number. Of course, the number didn't match anything we have, but it's not a county road. And, and so there we go. I think the last time the county did anything, any work out there was back in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, and again. Uh, our old friends, the Schedule A or Schedule B, the agreements with the Forest Service, the M O U. Uh, as far as I can tell, as far as I know from John Bay, that was been our only involvement ever out there, and so I have no indication that it's a county road.
Yeah, Bruce, I, I think Alan thought it was a county road. The commissioner took a tour out there one time, and that was one of the stops.
I, I remember that too, but John Bay has checked the state system and, and he doesn't think it's a county road. It's not, the state, the state would not have it listed on their inventory, I guess. And I think usually there would be a resolution of support, um, if it was on there, so. We could be wrong, but there's no, I thought it was as well, like the Goudat Road.
Well, Alan, he wanted, uh, that was one of the roads he wanted to, uh, close because it only went to one residence. He didn't think, he thought it was just a residence road rather than a county road. And the people that had the house that he went to didn't live there in the wintertime, they were just summer residents.
Very similar to the Goudat Road. The Goudat Road, I think, is clearly on.
Yeah.
I want to talk about the conservation easement for a minute. Have you looked at that, Bruce?
I did.
Is it between two private parties?
Yes.
So they could amend it?
Yes. I, I think it actually allows, um, for the, um, uh, the grant. The grant award to actually have some flexibility to allow that in writing, I think, or, yeah.
So they, they could take care of that?
They could.
Okay, and then on the road situation, I know on one of the former Platts, it calls it a county road, but. In my experience, you label a lot of them that way, or existing access, that does, there's no resolution accepting that that I saw. So to that point. If we approve the final Platt, would you sign the final Platt as not applicable again?
Yeah, well, the only way that I can sign it at this point, based on the information I have.
Thank you.
Did you say, uh, Commissioner?
Well, there, I don't know. If there's any questions.
Did you poke out anything you wanted to ask?
Anything to add to it, yeah.
Quite a bit of history of that road. Uh, that road's been there, so my parents bought that in fifty-eight at an auction. That road's been there since fifty-eight, when I was about nine years old. So I've always remembered, I always went up and served the, the Johnson Brothers, that's why they call it Rocky Johnson Road. It's now is owned by David Nielsen, uh, and his, what do you call it, Buck Ranch up there. Uh, it's changed a little bit. I mean, we talked about one house up there. There's now, uh, one house, uh, there's several old buildings, some of them are historic. I have the old cyanide lids on it, I like the thing. And then there's another house up on the David Nielsen property that we recently platted off. Uh, we do about a, I think a four, eight a parcel. Uh, I think there's some other plans for people up on that, on that property to actually come in and ask for some, uh. Subdivision work to be able to, to be able to sell some additional property or plats some additional property. For us, uh, we always, our dad, who was an engineer surveyor in Rapid City. He went up there and he negotiated the deal with the Forest Service, because I remember. When I was a young guy, he actually had to fly to Washington DC to get the deal put together with the USDA, which was that kind of Forest Service. That's when the right of way, wherever it was created, whether it's a, uh, Forest Service or a county, was brought up. To catch exactly on our property. And I asked our surveyor to confirm that, that in fact that easement was right on the property line. There's no dead man's land strip. Between our property line and that easement. So based on that, well, the reason, the only reason we platted six lots. Is because we're all getting to be in age, we don't want to have to come back through this process. We only wanted to do one calendar. One addition. But as we got into this process, it's, it's, it takes time, it's expensive. And it, uh, it's just our point in life, we just don't care to keep going back and trying to change the deal. We intend that to be a family area for our families. We have families scattered all over the country now. That's the purpose. Now, we split it up into six lots. Uh, our intention is, as we go through this whole issue, we looked at the Platt in nineteen ninety-four that was written, my dad is a very careful guy. He's happy to believe that there's some documents someplace, we're actually doing work on that right now. We have all of the old paperwork, the abstracts going way back, this is how it was created. We do know the fact that. It is on the, uh, Forest Service, uh, road list. And so we're gonna get more paperwork coming from, uh. The Denver office, I believe is where we've done, get information from on the Forest Service as to what that, whether it's a right of way, an easement, or whatever instruction. Um. I guess we're asking, in two places on this road, that road crosses our property completely. We want to be able to tie off of those two pieces on that road that's actually on our property. It's not, not outside of our property, but it actually crosses our property. So we're asking here, if we have a Platt, we can work with that, uh, as far as access will not. As we go forward. Guess that's the background line.
Oh, can you give us your name and address for the record, sir?
Duckville, twenty-seven thirty-two Larnark Road, Rapid City.
Okay, thank you. All right, further discussion? Commissioner Diver.
Fire plan?
Yeah, they, they already provided it.
It is complete, is it complete?
Um, I don't think in the end there was much that needed to be done.
So what are we approving today?
They're, they're asking for a preliminary.
Move to approve deployment, follow the recommendation of planning and zoning, and approve the preliminary.
I'll second it, further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, we'll say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Sorry, it passes.
I would move to approve the final Platt with the condition that we sign it as not applicable highway authority.
Second. Sign it what?
As not applicable.
Can't we have a motion in a second, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, we'll say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Yep. Passes.
Okay, so it was approved, taxes have to be paid in full on it in order for me to record it. Um, so just kind of keep that in mind. If you want to know the amount owed, um, after the meeting, it's probably on, they may have looked at it already, but if not, you can just stop at the treasurer's office. And just tell them you have a new Platt coming in and what it is, they can pull it up for you. So it'll be a couple of days before I get it recorded.
Right.
Okay, next one, please.
That motion was using.
Yes. Thank you. Well, I think it got messed up because our. Plating got changed because stuff got pulled through Thursday, so. Let's go to, it'd be number five in here, so.
So four is, four is up?
Uh, oh, I'm sorry, I was off. No, four is good. Sorry, I was off. Josephson. So this one is a lot line, um, adjustment slash consolidation of the wealth. So this is up in Aspen Hills Development. And how this started is the landowner that owned the original lot, twenty-two, wanted to purchase everything basically on. That side of the Pass Blue Road, so it was a portion of track twenty-one up here in the corner. Um, and so then, in the end, they ended up just doing kind of a lot line change, so twenty-two A, twenty-two A two. Is gonna encompass a portion of twenty-one, all of this into here. And then it, the gentleman on the other side decided to go ahead, because he had owned a couple of lots over there, he's gonna consolidate all of his, so. It's a portion of track twenty-one on the other side of Pass Blue, all of twenty-seven, all of twenty-eight, a portion of twenty-nine A. And. Twenty-two A one, a portion of that. So they end up taking about six parts, lots, and readjusting them based on where the road is. Is what they ended up doing. So it just kind of cleans up a bunch of little pieces on both sides of the road.
But they can, uh, go, uh, come in and out both ends, or it looks like, did they circle around to the other road, or?
Yeah, Aspen Hills Development has a loop all the way through it, back out. So this is just a bunch of lots inside that Aspen Hills Development.
Commissioner Diver. So, uh. I guess I'd move to approve the preliminary Platt, but I have some comments on the file. Follow the recommendation, approve the preliminary Platt. No fire plan needed, right?
Correct.
Need an exempt?
Um, yeah, we did ask.
Move, move to have an exempt because it's a consolidation Platt, second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for exemption. All those in favor of the motion, we'll say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And what's your?
Move to approve, follow the recommendation, approve the preliminary.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, further discussion. Seeing none, I'll, did you have something?
Well, I was gonna ask about, they're going out on some Forest Service road on one thirty-four. And, uh. They don't, don't like that, uh, road there, and the, from most developments there in Timberline, I think, complained because we let them build houses up in there, and then, then they couldn't use us. They have a good road. So, uh, we're just wondering. We should take that to heart.
Okay. Anybody else have any comment on it? Brendan?
This is an existing road and they're actually reducing the number of lots.
I know, I know, yeah. That's helpful, yeah, that's right.
Okay. Would you have a motion in a second on approving the preliminary? All those in favor with the motion, we'll say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Action on the final.
Mister Chairman, I have a couple of comments. In the notes, item six, it says contour animals are fifteen feet. There's no contours on here. So that might be something we remove. You might look through the rest of those notes, they just brought them over for the preliminary, see if they're needed. Otherwise, with those edits, I would move to follow the recommendation, approve the final. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. That's like your number provider. Diamond Guard truck.
Mister Chairman, this is.
Fire.
Mr. Chairman, this is fire.
Wildflower State.
No, we gotta do Diamond Arthurs first. It's what?
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was there and I moved.
So this is a preliminary and a final plat for a, uh, break off of two point two one acres. And so currently it's lot four A. They're gonna break it down into four A one and four A two. So four A one will be two point two one acres, four A two will be forty-four point eight five acres. Um, there is existing structures and outbuildings down there. I think ultimately the plan is to be able to build another structure and meets the requirements. It has access. Uh, was there anything else? Roger, that you have anybody to add to that? I mean, it's pretty basic.
Mr. Chairman, as a surveyor of record on this highway approach will be signed by the highway department.
The DOT. DOT, it's, I'll go to DOT.
You said there's a, uh, house on the lot, all right, and they want to build another house, but they're gonna put in a well and a septic tank, but they haven't done that?
More than likely, yes.
They haven't done, pardon me?
Yes, they will.
Not gonna use from the other lot or anything. You're gonna have their own well and those own septic.
I would assume so, yes. But that would be the intention, cause it'll have its own house on the other lot.
Was that a concern that they haven't done anything yet?
Say that again.
Is that a concern that they haven't done anything with the well and septic? Uh, yeah.
No.
So they have a fire plan, looks like it's all metal for the most part. And it's looks like, you said the fuels have been piled or taken care of for the most part.
Yep.
So we accept the fire plan. I'll make the motion to approve the preliminary in the final.
Second, we have a motion in a second to approve the preliminary as well as the final. Further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we'll do wild.
Now we'll do wildfire. So this one is, if you remember, we did the changes zoning, which was located, uh, by Whitewood Forest Acres and the interstate, that little piece in there. We did the changes zoning to Spurden Residential. This whole time I've been expecting to see this. Um, they are plating all of them out, so you can see exactly what the plan is with that piece of property. So all of the lots are low in there. Um, it does have water from the city. And they have pretty much put in all the roads already. Are they all fully done now? They, they weren't quite done, Randy, just to make sure. They weren't quite done last time we talked, so.
I may, Mr. Chairman, the, the roads are waiting for the bribe utilities to be installed. The water line is in, they're installing services right now. Before the final plat, the water.
So they're not gonna be asking for like a lot, they're just doing the work first and then they'll come in with a final plat.
Amber, correction, they may bond with tank.
But yeah, the water tank. But the roads themselves won't count on them like we've seen. Um, so they're doing a loop. It actually alleviates some pressure off the top side of the backside of Whitewood Forest Acres and whatnot. They would have a little bit better way out if they ever needed to possibly, uh, with this development. Plats there meets the requirements. Um, they did submit some road profiles in here, and I know John's not here, but John did go out. He's been out there a couple of times looking at things and I think he's been kind of on top of what, what they're doing there. Uh, there is copies in here of the covenants. There's the letter from Roger, if you need anything. There's also the water, the water main extension, so you can see where all the water stuff is. So they've met the requirements of submitting everything they needed for the preliminary plat, and then they would have to do full as built over the final plat.
So we're just looking at the preliminary plat?
Just the preliminary today, yeah.
I, I was.
Mr. Chairman?
I was concerned and, and wondering about, uh, why they didn't put in a septic system or sewer system, rather, septic tanks in thirty-four lots.
They're all, at least a couple acres inside. So it had to meet the minimum.
All that.
Given the deposit and the access to a central system, it wasn't feasible.
Well, they fight the water out from the city.
Right. There must be some way to go. Well, I think my understanding, the central sewer would have been a lot more than you would have planned, other than that. I don't know how long they considered that option, but you know, that the plan has always been to use septic codes. Sure, thank you. Okay.
Just double check, this lot of fire hydrants, is that true? Is that correct? Yeah, so that, that'll be, the fire plan is.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to follow the recommendation, approve the preliminary.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the preliminary, further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
We do not do the plat, they need the.
No, yeah, we, they.
All right, number seven.
Okay. This one, it's a lot line. Just, so, okay, this is a lot inside Dancing Sky Edition of Powderhouse Pass and it's a lot line change between two lots. Uh, it's hard to see it on here, but it's basically right in here. There was a little bit of a change. And it's based on the structure, I would say is the best way to explain it, based on that structure that's going in there. You can see they were, you close.
Move to follow the recommendation of the, uh, planning and zoning, approve the preliminary in the final. Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the preliminary as, preliminary as well as the final. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
This next one was a corrective plat, so this wasn't, uh, based on my recommendation. This was between the deeds office and surveyor. There was an issue with the original lot one, block nine, that just, they caught after it had gotten reported. This piece of, let's see where my cursor is, this piece of the highway right of way here was actually included in the plat. The drawing was off just a little bit, so they, they're, they're just fixing it with this plat, that this was the way the deeds office asked him to do it.
More of a housekeeping issue?
Yeah, it was just, the acreage was right, but the line was wrong. That makes sense. That's probably the best way to explain it. Line was in the wrong spot.
Correct.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Amber, is the corrective plat exempt of the process or in the ordinance?
We've kind of allowed it that way, just because, so we just had to do a final plat, because they're, it's the exact same everything, except for that one line, had to get fixed.
So the point five eight six acres is on public sewer and water?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, that lot, that lot is inside the C A.
Okay.
Yep.
This is part of this commercial.
No, this is just fixing the plat.
Commercial's next.
Yeah, this is, this is just the plat. You guys had already approved this plat, it just needed that change.
It has all the signature blocks on it.
Yes, yeah, we did a full, so they have to re-sign it.
That's the correct process.
Yep.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Amber, no structures yet.
No, nothing on there yet, no. All right, so this one is also a lot line change, we have a lot of lot line adjustments this year for this one, but so what they're doing with this one, you guys had actually seen a similar plat to this. And they were trying to work with the road district over on this side and the lot here. Um, that plat has gone away. They resubmitted it this way. Um, so they're exchanging, you can kind of see this little square here, this little square here. They're basically flipping it. So right now Chipman's own this and Klein's own this, and they're just redoing the lot lines, so this piece will go into Chipman's and this piece, and then the other way. So it's just moving the lot lines on both sides, I guess. And then as part of that, um, there's some extenuating things that have been going on here. There was a building permit issued to, uh, Ricky Jacobs on this lot here, which is not part of this plat, just so you know, that it helps set it up. And there is an old easement that ran through here from the eighties. And that structure was built over the top of that easement. So they've been trying to work together to figure out how to, how to deal with it. So what they would like to do as the process occurs, this will have to be vacated. Obviously, we have to do that through separate process, but it's a public easement. They would reestablish it up here. They've come to an agreement to move it, so it's out of there. Um, which would then take care of the structure issue on this other plat. But as part of that, you can see in here, um, Greg Klein has negotiated with Ricky Jacobs a forty foot easement right here to get to that new piece. That is also a section line, so we've had some discussion with Greg, so we kind of understand, um, that he would have to, if at such times to the point that he wants to try to build a driveway in there, he would have to continue, guys, to open that section line. A portion of that section line already does have Whitewood Peak Road on it. Um, and that's been there for a long time. And the kicker to all of this is they are in the road district of the Mountain Meadow Drive home down here, and they're aware of that. They knew that they were in the road district. Um, Greg is currently working in the road district for them to approve the plat. Not to approve the plat, to sign the plat, sorry, to sign the plat. Um, that's, we're, we're still dealing with that, but we're trying to get there. Ultimately, the plat itself, there's no change to what the ultimate goal was. There's just a lot of pieces going on. But he does not want to vacate this right of way till he can be for sure that the board is in place and then he'll go back and we can deal with the vacation process. Is that, is that everything? Is there anything else?
And possibly the, I think Mr. Klein's intention is, is to improve that small portion of the section line. It's all held, we discussed that by statute, that there is a right to travel on the section line, the right to approve, but I think that's where we caused them, the county commissioner to authorize and approve that. Even though there's probably been some improvements made by the Whitewood, uh, Peak Road folks, um, but nonetheless, trying to get that correctly.
Okay. Mr. Chairman. Is there a document number for the forty foot access easement for ingress into the Chipman track?
Um, I don't think.
I don't see it on the document.
There was. It's on, well.
It's not on the file.
I don't think there was. I think they were just going, they're just dealing with that. Do you know if you've recorded anything for that forty feet yet? I don't think so.
I think, yeah.
Let me look at the drawing. I wonder if they ended up adding it afterwards.
I didn't see it on the notes either.
They did. They must have added it afterwards, after they sent me that.
What's the document number?
It's twenty twenty-three nine fifty, so it would be a new. Twenty twenty-three nine fifty for a forty foot access and utility. So it's just not on this updated.
And that's on both preliminary and file?
Yep, it looks like it. Yep.
Okay. Later on.
Question for Amber or Bruce. This will be signed by the road district and the county?
I don't think the county would do it. Road district would be the only one.
The section line's not the road district, is it? Going north from the Whitewood Peak Road to the access easement?
I don't think the county would sign it though.
I mean, they only need one signature, it's just that.
Yeah, I was contemplating, I see your point. I was contemplating that would, would be the road district. They're, they're more affected by it than we are.
Yeah, I, I agree. I just.
Your point is okay.
I would move to approve the preliminary in the final with the notation in the minutes that any improvements on the section line would have to come before this body. I'll second that, but before that, I'll make it public for example. I'll second, I'll second the exemption.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on the exempt. All those in favor of that motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, we're back to your original.
Motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second for approval of the preliminary and the final plat. Any further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
So now we just get to wait on a second. So let me know what you call it. Or, or you can let him know that it's in my office and it's been approved, but.
I'm on the meat, but you're on the table.
Okay. Next one. So this one is a plat that you guys have also looked at previously and asked for clarification on the access from the DOT highway. Uh, this is track A and B of the McLeod Lot, which is the old President's Park property. It's where it was cut in half by the highway on both sides. Um, and they did provide the document, the DOT sent me this. There's not an exact location, but they do have access. So I don't know how that works, cause I don't do DOT permits, but that's what they permitted. Um, and they are not coming through the Powderhouse Pass subdivision. Like, it kind of looks like it's on the backside of this, but it is DOT access. So we do have that, um, it is, it's owned recreation commercial currently. You're gonna see a changes zoning requirement coming up.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
On the preliminary plat, are the acreage, the acreage of track B isn't large enough for a septic?
Correct, they're not, that's not their intention.
They're gonna hook into a public system.
They're not gonna have any septic.
So since it's, uh, do we need to do anything on the motion or the plat that says that they would have, they wouldn't have a septic in them, so they have?
No, because the zoning requirements take care of it. It, it doesn't mean the acreage for a septic.
So they could get a building permit on something without septic, but they couldn't get a building permit on something that had septic? Without a?
Without doing something, getting a American stage or, or something, yeah.
So we need to make this an exemption as well?
Yes, it was an exemption.
This exemption, does it need to be declared?
Fire plan needs to happen?
Um, fire plan needs to be implemented. So we don't, we have, we don't have one yet, but I don't, I don't need one, so I'm exempted.
Okay, so then you, you hold the final until?
Yeah, I think all we were waiting on is, it sounded like there was no work to be done, if we just get, like, one of those situations.
I'll make the motion for preliminary, second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the preliminary. Seeing no further discussion, all those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? If you want, you want us to approve the final and you hold it, so you're satisfied?
I would be fine with that in this scenario.
I would move to move the final plat to the meeting on the twenty-seventh June, continue it to the twenty-seventh June.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to move it to the next meeting.
Just the final.
Any hardship for that?
Just, you have a lot, and I don't know if I can fit it on there, but we'll figure it out.
Oh, we're looking for a fire plan.
Okay, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. You're, you're in.
I'm, I'm in any, I wanted to just, I'm gonna have to do an administrative.
Bring your next one, please.
Yep.
We've closed, we've closed the public hearing, uh, Bruce.
Yeah.
This is just our second reading, right?
Yeah.
Take a quick break.
Yeah, go ahead.
We'll take a few minutes here while we where's other people at?
I don't want any people.
How are you, Randy? Nice to see you, Randy. Yeah.
There's somewhere decent.
I know.
Well, that's sure, that will impart, where isn't the zoning a whole lot more interest at?
It's in the staff report.
Yeah, I mean, I know, look at that.
Okay, we'll come back to order the, this next item, we've already had the public hearing, closed the public hearing, and we had our first reading, this is the day for the second reading for the board to make a decision, so there will be no public comment, unfortunately, well, so we, we can't reopen it, it's where we're, where we're at. So Amber, you want to?
Yeah, so, well, nothing has changed from the last time, the map that you see here are the areas marked for future commercial development, commercial or light industrial, and you can use the zoning districts that would apply to the uses. There's the area up here and here, this area here, and then these two lots here for Black Forest Road. At the time, planning and zoning had made a recommendation to approve the areas along the highway, but to not allow the two areas along Black Forest Road, that was the recommendation that came forward to county commission. I don't have anything to add to that, I guess. The landowners are here, they may have something else that's up to you guys if you want to differ, but that was what keep over from planning and zoning, so.
Okay, I will, I will allow the landowner, if they, if they have anything further to add to this, to stand up and speak for it right now.
My name's Ron Williams, I'm with A E two S in Rapid City, represent V H Development in this project. I know you got a couple things before you today with the, the land use map that was submitted originally, approved, or reviewed by Amber's team, staff, that rec, that came back with a recommended approval, and went to planning and zoning, planning and zoning reviewed it, came with a recommendation to approve excluding those two pieces, right, these two pieces, so I guess that's before you today. Approve our land use map that is amending the master plan as submitted or as recommended by the planning and zoning commission. And when the planning and zoning made that recommendation, there was no reason stated why they excluded those two lots in their decision, that just made the decision, so we're not real sure why those two were excluded.
At the time, I believe, because I do sit on planning and zoning, that we had a room full of folks like you have here today in opposition to those two small pieces, and that's why the, the planning and zoning was, and I believe it was unanimous at that time, yeah, planning and zoning, correct?
Mr. Chairman, does that remember, I think they just talked about compatibility and use as well with the adjacent area, was that sort of the underlying here? Not just the sheer number of people here, but was more compatibility issue?
Yeah, I can address that. So anytime anything gets built up, I know there's been some complaints, and it might be in your packet, that Powerhouse Pass or V H Development is going to be able to do anything they want out there, if, if this gets passed, that we can build anything we want, we can build a factory, I've heard pot farm, I've heard all kinds of things, that's not in fact actually true. There are so many controls in place at the county level. I mean, if, if we could do anything we wanted to out there, I wouldn't be standing before you today, right? I mean, there's a process that you have to go through, there's controls that the county has, and we're not trying to circumvent any of those controls. Anything that goes on out there, anything we build has to be thoroughly reviewed by you, and in addition, it's got to be reviewed by the Powerhouse Pass C I D Architectural Committee, so we don't want to do anything out there that's a detriment to the community. We consider all these people here part of that community, so we don't want to do anything that's, that's a detriment. Well, I guess we're just asking that you take that into consideration.
You haven't really added anything new from what we heard, I would, and so out of fairness and the rest, the folks in the public hearing has been closed, well, we'll stop that now and, and leave it to the board for their consideration. Mr. Director.
I just need to declare that one of the testimonies last meeting was my godson, Philip Hammond, but no, no blood relation, but he is my godson.
There's no financial stake in any of this?
No, just transparency. I had a question for counsel, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Can we approve something other than what was submitted, like planning and zoning did, where we exempt those two properties?
As long as you're not adding, we can approve less than what's, what's, what not.
Thank you. And then I had a question for the, the owner's attorney. Would you consider putting any kind of covenant on any of these properties that they would just make them storage only?
I've talked to Greg and John and Cash, who are the prime developers here, and yes, they definitely would, excuse me, consider using or limiting the parcel two to the construction of, of storage units. They've also planned in that development of the property as stored, to be used as storage use to keep the driveway away from the Jacobs property. But I would like to point out that there are properties in a very close vicinity that are already commercial properties, they've been commercial properties for quite some time, so I think they would, I, I think Powerhouse Pass and V H Development would prefer that the two property being developed, be proposed or changes only when accepted, that change with the, also with the understanding that this board, this commission has the authority, can exercise the authority to approve anything that, that would be proposed in those two areas along with the other areas. Before anything could be developed, and they would have to enter into development with the county before they would build anything. So even though you would approve, if you would approve the application in its entirety, it doesn't open, you don't want to say they can build anything, you still have the control, we expect you to exercise that control, so.
Just some clarity, not only parcel two, not parcel three? On the one diagram, it's two and three, three is where the power line comes through, two is the one that's next to the search and rescue.
Just to clarify your question, are you asking whether they like the storage units on both of those?
Yes.
Uh, no, they are approved, but you have storage units on number two, number three, they don't know yet.
As you said, number three earlier, I believe.
So, okay, John, can I have you state your name and address, please?
John Reddickson, I'm in the tree for Powerhouse Pass. Thank you.
All right, thank you for the. Further discussion or action?
Can I just say something? Is this true, Amber, that a commercial property?
It's up to the board if they address you or not, because the public hearing's closed.
No, I, we better stick with our program here and. I think.
Folks, please.
I think the whole discussion is, is those two small pieces, I think the rest would pretty much accept it. I think they're mostly appropriate for those other ones. Three, I don't think should be used at all, it's just small and weird and not where it shouldn't be. Two, I could, with the restriction that that's only storage, maybe, but that, that three piece just is weird.
Question for counsel. If we were to approve, similar to the plan and zoning, would that restrict them from coming back and asking for a rezone of these two properties for a year, because it would have been denied? Because if you have a denial on a rezone, you have to.
You're going to have to rezone today.
So Keith, okay, I, I have to clarify, you are not rezoning the property, it is a planned unit of development, you are only amending their master plan, so you don't follow the same procedure as a change.
So they could come back anytime and amend the plan to include those two lots, and we could discuss those independently. That was my point. Thank you for clarity. And then Amber, if, if this is accepted as commercial, all of the commercial uses would be accepted with the development plan?
Correct.
But they'd go through the development plan process?
Correct, so highway service commercial currently allows, because keep in mind, we had updates May fifth, they took effect, so now this will underneath that new update. May fifth, highway service commercial does allow storage, but because there's nothing on that property currently, they have to go through the development plan process to show you what they're doing with it, which is another layer, that's, it's a separate layer, so they would have to do that. And the highway service commercial would be the closest, I would feel, because of where it's located, that would be the closest requirement to that property.
Okay, well, I will tell you that sitting through planning and zoning and during the public hearings, listening to the folks, I, I was comfortable denying with two smaller pieces, but I cannot make a motion on this.
I'll move to deny the, the change in the land use plan, is that a proper motion?
Are you denying the whole thing, or are you doing what planning and zoning recommended?
You want to deny the two little parts with, except, exceptions, so you'd approve it with the exception of the two smaller pieces, which follows the plan and zoning recommendation.
That does follow.
Is that your motion?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, we have a motion.
So basically what planning and zoning said, involving the recommendation of planning and zoning is what I'm hearing.
So that's not allowing commercial development on those two parts, small parts?
On the two pieces along Black Forest Road, it would be approving the stuff along the highway, not the two pieces by Black Forest Road.
On the land plan.
Okay, I'm going to second it, just for the purpose of further discussion, and I see, John, you're back to the table, do you have something pertinent here to, without getting into public discussion on fairness of everybody?
I would offer up that the, does not apply to parcel three, but on parcel two, Powerhouse Pass would agree to put a covenant on that to just storage.
I think that's something that would have to follow this, I, I don't think. So.
Commissioner Flanagan?
And just to be clear, they could come in, in a, with just parcel two, and there'd be a more in-depth discussion on, on that, if that, that would be an option for the petition if we, with the motion goes forward, right?
Commissioner Dyre? Yeah, you know, I, I think that that's appropriate, that to follow the plan and zoning motion, and then the applicant to come in, and we could talk specifically about these two parcels and the uses on them, that would only cost them a couple months' time, we could make that distinction, I think that's appropriate.
Okay, further discussion?
Do you want to use any of your considerations for?
You're talking about the reason why we are accepting these two parts?
I don't know, just, I think that's what they're looking for, is some sort of.
I didn't make the question, but I would suggest that, that three is just an awkward-shaped lot that's, I, I don't think is appropriate for what the thing is, two is another discussion that needs more different consideration than, than the other pieces, I think the other pieces are pretty obvious, that one to me, I, I might be able to deal with if I had better information, when I would look a little closer maybe, but we've done, we've done things like this in the past where they're supposed to be a buffer, they're supposed to be this, they're supposed to be something else, and so you really hold the beef to fire, they, it hasn't always happened, so that one piece, I'm a little more concerned about, the other pieces that we talked about past, and I don't have.
Commissioner Dyre?
Well, I would think if we would offer to amend the motion that we did this because of the impact on the surrounding property. For acts, I would, I would ask that we add that to the motion.
Jason, my use is, I'm going to consider it.
I'll, I'll agree to that on second. Further discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, everyone's.
So we're going to.
We're following.
exempt those two.
We're, we're following planning and zoning's.
That's what I understood.
All right, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. I'm sorry, guys, that we got to follow all the rules, so I'm sorry that.
I would request that we, based on that change, we need to update the land, just so that we have a current, just a minute, just so we have the current one with what was passed.
Okay.
Thank you.
I do want to make a statement that. I don't think we were unfair asking the developer if they had anything further.
Yeah, he went on too long, we should have cut him off. And John was, John was a little.
Then I'm screwed up, well, that's the best I can do.
We could have asked a later question, so I knew what she was after, so I asked Amber.
All right, next item. Deb Triddle.
Who's Deb at? She must not have anything.
Yeah, she has something.
Wait, I got to. I come with lots of stuff today.
Well, it's a.
Have to organize. Which one do you want up?
The other one beside the shop is two.
You want to start with one? He hasn't numbered, but I don't know where you're starting. I'll start wherever they want me to, well, then I'll let Bruce run it. I don't know where you're starting.
No, I keep going.
Where do you want me to start at, Bruce?
See, it's up to you, I'll get it up here in a second. Number one on my list is notice of uncollectible taxes.
Mr. Chairman, could we do the ten o'clock public hearing, we have a few rooms. Get it out of the way?
I can wait.
Okay. I'm sorry, Deb.
No, that's fine.
I recuse myself from that.
And this is the time and the place for any M public hearing, resolution twenty twenty-three dash fourteen, a resolution to order in, to vacate a portion of the highway. Brendan, are you handling that one? Roger, sir?
Stay down.
All right, Roger. Tell us what we're doing.
Well, good morning, this is another petition to vacate some short stretch of section line that goes across, like Jim Robinson, he's the only landlord that's affected with this. Currently, the east west section line, just below the cul-de-sac, grassy driveway, you see, I think that actually extends through a building, two buildings now, and so we're kind of tidying that up as well. There was going to be a replat that was going to be offered, that has since been pulled, so we're just dealing with the vacation of the section lines as they run through Mr. Robinson's property. And it's, his property is surrounded by forest service for the most part, and so the section line's not really going anywhere.
Okay, well, let's, the public hearing, we will offer to the public for, for or against this, to stand up, please state your name and your address, if you want to speak on behalf of this. Is there anyone in the body of the audience that would like to speak for you? The audience is shaking their head, so we'll close the public hearing and offer back to the board. Commissioner Flanagan?
I'm always reticent to get rid of section lines, but in this case, on the south side is the Rochford Road, on the north side is the Juco Ranch Road, and east and west wise, it's not going to go anyplace. Well, in theory, I guess it could end up in that, the H E S to the south, but. So I always am very careful when I make the motion to approve a section line, to get rid of one, but I, I'll make the motion on this one to approve it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval, for the discussion, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, go home. All right, Deb, I apologize for moving the in and out, but this is your time, Deb.
Thanks, thank you.
Yeah, I think we could start with state statistics first, I guess, I think that's this one.
Uh, no, that's, that's eighteen, miss, state statistics is the wrong one.
Okay. Stand by.
Yeah, this, this one.
This one right here, right?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Sheriff, is your permission?
I went online and, and went and looked at, um, where we set up for, um, census. And for 2023, Lawrence County is number eight in the state for statistic population lines. So then I went in, I got the 20, these are 22, uh, statistics for what we did for motor V for last year. And I'll just start for titles. For titles last year, Lawrence County came in fourth. We did 14,943 titles in our county. Uh, we register, uh, we came in fifth for registering pickups, passengers and trucks. So we did good there. And then, let's see. ATVs, we're third in the state. The motorcycles, ATVs. Snowmobiles were second. Electric cars were fourth. And I think that's because we have so many, um, state numbers from other places that register here. Uh, recreational, and that these are like your motor homes and such, we're third in the state. Trailers. Um, we drop a little bit down to eight because, um, back east, they have more trailers than we do, your farmers and stuff like that. Um, boats, we don't, we're 11 because you don't have any big boats in our county. Commercial, we're nine. Roast vehicle, we dropped down to 40th because that's East River with all your farmers and stuff. Buses, we're at sixth. So we, we did pretty good there. Where do you want to go to next, Bruce?
Want to talk about, yeah. What was the population? Where, where, where did we rank?
We're eight. Eight. So as you can see, we do very well.
We moved from ninth to eighth, huh?
We went from ninth to eighth, but in our motor V, instead of my office, we run fourth, the fifth in most of our stuff, we registrations and stuff. My girl run her, her stuff on wheel tax. Last year, when we finished out the year, came up about 4.2% above what we were for 2021. This year, we're up about 4% right now through the month of May for wheel tax. If that keeps going, that'll be more money for for our highway department.
Thank you, Commissioner. You're in for supporting the wheel tax. Thank you for all the wheels that you support us with.
Yes.
Then we come to these lovely ATVs. The month, for the month of May, last month, we were up, just for the permits alone, 125 more in the month of May than we did last year. Um, they're not decreasing. Last, for June of this year, we worked seven days in June. We've already done 221 of them. And I'm hoping that it will get better when we start the new law that goes into effect July 1st, which we don't get to do until July 3rd. But it's going to take a whole calendar year for my office to see help in my office because right now they have to come in, we've got to go through all this stuff, and then they come back again another year and we have to go through the same thing again. But with this new calendar, with the new law going into effect, they will get this decal. And it's good for one year. And then next year they will, they'll get a card in the mail and they can renew it and they'll get this sticker. They won't have to come in, they won't have to fill out the forms, they won't have to do everything again. So that's going to take some pressure off our office. And right now these 201 permits that we.
Place of the license plate, Deb?
They, right now, these are, they're only getting a piece of paper. And we do, we did 337 of them in May. You know how much money we got for it? Zero.
How much with the new ones?
This one here, we're going to get $25.
Unless they do it online.
If they do it online, the state gets the whole 50. If we do it through our office, we charge 50, we get 25. But most of them come to our door. So this is going to help and it's going to, hopefully it's going to alleviate, you know, them not, because they come in, they have to do all the paperwork and they come to the office, they don't have their social security numbers. Like yesterday, we had lines out the door because half of them didn't have all the paperwork. So they had to get online, get somebody home to get the stuff, download it. So this, they'll, this will go on their unit and will be there unless they sell the unit. They will just have to re-register it. So this, and it'll be $50 every year. So hopefully this is going to take a little bit of leeway off my office because my office has been handling.
So they won't have a plate?
No, it'll, they'll have this sticker. This sticker goes on the back of the unit.
Okay, so we're essentially either the, the license plate, yours are on the back.
Because, yeah, it's, it's just a, it's like a boat sticker.
Yep.
And then this is all they get. It's not transferable or anything. And, um, they don't get a title or anything.
But to be on the highway, this isn't a highway anymore?
Yeah, they, this is, they can drive it on the highway, anywhere but the interstate. It's just going to be like the temporary permit they get. It's only good for five days to 15 days. Other than this, it'll be good for a calendar year.
Okay, but I got license plates on my ATVs, so I throw them away?
No, no. You, if you're licensed, that's good. These are for the people that are only coming here on a state border. And South Dakota residents cannot get this. They have to title their vehicles. And honestly, it's cheaper.
Randy?
Well, then what this also resolves is there are other, they can only buy X amount of days on the other permit. Once a year. So they would come and be here five days and then max out was five or 15. So this one is good for the whole year. So they can make multiple trips here with that.
Because they get mad because they come and they can come more. So then they will title, which we made more money if they titled because then we get the wheel tax. So hopefully this will help resolve some of that. And if they want, some of them are still going to title because this is only good in South Dakota.
See, some of them will title them here and get plates here and they can't drive them on the roads there even with plates. So this is easier. So plates don't do them any good at home.
Yeah. So hopefully this will help. Um, Nebraska, this will work for Nebraska because you can't ride in Nebraska anywhere whether we have anything, but Wyoming, Colorado. We have a lot of New Jersey's titling here now because New Jersey will honor our plates. They won't title them, type plate them there, but they'll honor ours. So we make a lot of wheel tax off of it.
The good news is we get a fee off of this.
Yes, because we're going to get money off this because we were not getting off this. And this was our office's idea to try the stickers and peer listen to us. And so hopefully it works.
All right. Title transfer, do you talk about that?
What?
Title transfers and plates? Did you talk about that yet? That's, that's your next name?
Yeah.
Have you covered that? Okay.
Quick question. Quick question, a quick question. Is the surge, you think, because of the new law coming in?
No.
Okay.
No. Um, and then, well, postage that we had, um, the law went into effect. Randy did help us get that because we were losing money and stuff. Um, it went into effect March 15th, but we did honor any, because peer had already mailed out the cards with the old fee on it. So if anybody mailed the cards in after March 15th through the end of March, we honored the old fee because that's what they were sent. But anybody called, we charged it. Um, April, it was still down because a lot of people came to the counter, paid their taxes and stuff and did not mail it in. But as you can see, in May, it went up to 600 to 700. So we're bringing in good money on the 750. We do pretty good because if we can stuff two plates or three plates in an envelope, we do pretty good on that. So we should be okay for that. So we're doing good on that.
We'll talk about the main and overall investments on the sweep account.
Okay. As you can see in our color chart here, um, we're doing pretty good. I have money in Wells Fargo in First Interstate. Wells Fargo, we're doing really good in there. Uh, right now it's at 4.96%. First Interstate's only at, uh, point 20, uh, 2%, but they do not charge us anything for my checking account there. Everything is free up there. I have some money marketed at, uh, Black Hills Community. It's at 2%. First National, I've just got a little bit up there. We're not making a lot there. Then we've got the Collier CD at 3.5%. And then down here shows you the percentages of what holds, where all the banks are at, you know, the percentage of what bank is at. So it's kind of spread out. So we don't have a lot of pages in one basket. And our Wells Fargo sweep is doing really good. It keeps going up and I was really excited in May when taxes came in. In April, in May, I was able to have the sheriff run over because I had a bunch of taxes come in. So I had him run a check over and I dumped about 15 million over at the bank and held it there for about 15 days. And we ended up making 91,000 in May in interest. And I had to pull nine of it back because we had to pay some, pay the schools out and stuff. Um, so I figured it out, but what I have in there right now, we got 19,133,000. We should be making $78,000 for the next couple of months. We've got some tilt money coming in. And then, um, when taxes start coming in in August or October, I get some extra money, stick a few million over there to make some extra money, but Brendan, I figured we should make between, what? Close to 900,000, close to a million, depending on if I, if the interest stays the same, you know? So if I get any extra, I stick it over there for, you know, a month, month and a half. If I have to pull it out, I do. Now it does, it looks like we have a lot in, um, First Interstate right now, but what bills got paid today and what we have to pay out to the school tomorrow, we're, we're going to have to pull out for May. So that's going to be down a little bit. I'm hoping I can keep the money in Wells Fargo, but if I have to, I might have to pull a bit out there for the next month or so to pay some bills. We keep trying to keep as much as we can in Wells Fargo because we make it some really good money.
One is a figure you have to have on the lease before, before you have to, before you don't get it.
I've got it set up at Wells Fargo right now that I, I'm not using the checking, I, the checking accounts, we're zero at Wells Fargo. Everything I, everything I have in Wells Fargo is making up every penny. So all I have, I, anything I deposit goes right into the sweep and then I just write a check out if I. I've got it set up over there because that's not our main, our main checking account right now is First Interstate. And, and they've been really good with us. They're not charging us anything at all for our checking account there. So that's working out really good. And then we're on to our uncollectible mobile home. I have a cabin that sits up on Strawberry Hill. And we were sending the tax notice to Paul Miller Jr. And he quit paying the taxes on it. He sent me a copy of the lease that was originally in his father's name, who is deceased. And I checked with the Forest Service and the lease agreement with the Forest Service is under Paul Miller Senior. And they said that if we auctioned off the cabin for delinquent taxes, because it's a building on lease site, we had to do the distress form, that we had to say that the cabin had to be moved because they would no longer uphold the agreement with the Forest Service. The sheriff's office not, did not get any bids on it. And Junior wants nothing to do with it. So the Forest Service will be tearing the cabin down and they will be shutting off the agreement with it. So, and I cannot go after Paul Miller Jr. because the agreement with the, the cabin was with the dad. So I'm, eventually we're going to have to bait off the tax. I have nobody to go after. Because the agreement with the Forest Service was with the dad, he's deceased, it's like that cabin that was up.
Yeah.
Yeah, bought by the Skellas. The, the Forest Service came in and just tore it down. And that's what they're going to end up doing with this cabin too.
They do that on most of them.
Yeah. They're slowly but surely trying to get rid of a bunch of these as these cabins start getting dilapidated and the people, if they don't keep up with the agreements, with the taxes or with their, or with their, um, lease agreements, they're going to start tearing them down. So this one will have to go on the, um, uncollectible list. And then, um, eventually I'll be in here to have the, have the taxes debated on.
No action at this time?
Yeah, no action. Just to let you know this uncollected.
Do I need to make a motion to declare it uncollective?
Yes, yes.
So it's a SDCL ten.
Right now we do. So move.
Second.
Okay, move to the second. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. I, I, I oppose.
Mr. Chairman, Deb, I also found our call volume. I don't look at any information to present, but you wanted to discuss that.
I do that because Greg got this on vacation. He got the information for me and it's blowing my mind away. You guys, my office has been inundated. I have had to bring Jan back in, um, between the ATVs, the phone calls and everything we have been behind. I mean, between the phone calls and the mail, like yesterday, we got 49 ATV permits in the mail, between the phone calls and stuff. So Greg was able to get the information for me. And just since January, the phone calls coming into my office has been 13,935. The phone calls that my office has had to make out has been 6,173. So I just went in, got it by month and did, just averaged it out, but took the days that we worked per month and divided it out. And just in June, for the seven days, six and a half days, because he did this at 10 o'clock yesterday, for June, for the six and a half days that we worked, we averaged 233 phone calls in and out in my office per day. May was 229, April was 205, March was 187, February's 162, and January's 121. A lot of these were like Sally, they're anywhere from 10 to 15 to 20 minutes at a time because they're out of staters. She's having to get money from them, talking through the permits. They're ATVers. We want to come to your office. I mean, so sometimes we might not have somebody in our office. We're all on phones or and we got all of, like yesterday, we're all at the counter, the phones are ringing. We have to take the and take the messages off the phone, call them back. It's, so my budget's going to be kind of icky because, like I said, I've had to bring Jan in. She was, she's here all this week. Um, she was off last week. I had her the week before because we were sinking. Trying to just keep up with the mail. Jan comes in, she doesn't do the counter. It's us two. She just does the mail to get us caught up with the mail. Because when, we've been getting 40 to 50 ATVs at a time in the mail. And then Sally's been getting 20, 30 out of stater titles at a time. And then you still got to wait counters, through the phones.
So you, you want to motion to disconnect your phone?
I would love that, honestly. At least.
Bruce, is Custer County not doing something they were doing? And so are you getting some more business up here because of that?
I think getting some because of Pennington, they changed their hours and they got long lines at their treasurer's office too.
I had one guy drive up here from, from Pennington and I said, I can't help you. A lot of them want to go stand in the line. I said, I'm sorry, I can't do your stuff. And then there are some counties that are refusing to do out of staters. So they're coming here. There's some counties that are refusing to do ATVs. So they're coming here. There's and some of them are surrounding, connecting counties that are refusing to do out of staters. Or so we're getting.
How can they do that?
Good question.
I don't know. I, I don't know. We're getting it. So I, I brought Jan in and for my, I don't want to hire another person right now because I really think once this ATV law goes through and we get that whole calendar year in there, it's, it's going to get better. So in my budget for next year, I put Jan back in. I mean, this year, I'm, I'm trying to make it work in my budget. I might be a little short, see pin here. Um, but I put it in for my budget next year just to get me through that whole calendar year. But ATVs are, they're not good.
Does that money go to our general fund, the ATV? I think that's what it was, right? The $25? I think that's how the statute was written. I think it goes into the general fund. It doesn't, it's not, it doesn't go to highway and bridge the way the statute was presented on the floor.
It goes to debt, treasurer's fees, which is a good price.
Yeah.
I think so.
Yeah. And we didn't want to limit it.
What do you think, Reverend Deb?
No, I, I think I covered everything. It's, it's, it's been busy.
Thanks for all your hard work.
I have eight, but I, but right now I was, I had one quit and then I'm training a new one. So that puts us a little short. And then we're trying to get vacations. And so I've been short. You get one person off your, or last year when we were full staffed and everybody's doing good, we could get two off. Their training girl, she's, it makes it tough. So, but we're making it work and, and I just told the girls, you need to be off. I mean, it's summertime vacation. If people have to wait a little bit, they're going to have to wait. It's just that we get behind. And some of the girls, like, was it two weeks ago, we had, I mean, literally lines out the door and the girls work through their lunch hour and stuff. and the girls work through their lunch hour and stuff, and I'm not paying them, they're not taking comp, I'm paying them time and a half overtime in their paycheck, because there's no way to take comp off, because we're, some of them are maxed out on vacation. And graciously, Brenda's office has offered a couple of the other girls about to come through the phones and stuff, but they can't answer the questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
All right, items to the public, Mr. Muller, do you have anything you'd like to talk about?
Well, thank you, sir.
That came, of course, in your meeting today.
This document, it's loaded in here.
I, I don't know anything about it, I just presented.
Ontario Zinc Corporation?
Is that the ones, is that the exploratory drilling on the Forest Service property up on the side of the canyon?
Yep.
I've got calls and stuff on that, it's like, it's Forest Service.
Yeah.
Nothing we can do.
But evidently, Spirit Beach took a, a stand against it.
Yeah, there was a public meeting where we had, they had, uh, both sides give information last week. And it wasn't just on this one, it was on all mining, but they talked about this.
Yeah, we don't, you know, due to the fact it's on Forest Service land, we don't have a dog in the fight, so I don't think we need to do anything.
I don't think so, this is not a tin mine, I don't think, right? This is not, this is not a west side, right?
But it runs all the way from Big L over.
Yeah, I mean, they're just doing exploration. You've gotten notice of those things, right? And so, uh.
I think there's, I think there's a total on the forest right now of all the permits for twelve acres of this hermitage, all the permits that are out there for drilling. I don't know if that's the exact number, but it's close to that, because each pad is only like a, they got twenty-five drill sites. Yeah, and, uh, but you're right, and, and the city of Spirit Beach did like the city of Rapid, they did that on the Potfellow ownership, filed a resolution. I agree, we don't have a dog in the fight.
Yeah. Okay, is there anything that?
Just so I know, so this gentleman called, the one that's saying, he's coming in at two thirty, he's. I just, can I relay that to him, that we just talked about it this morning? I mean, just, because I don't know why, but he made the point, it's been like, two thirty, I'm like, okay, I have no idea why.
But I mean, due to the fact it's on Forest Service property, we, we don't have anything to say about it.
Well, that's what I was gonna tell him, because we've never been in any Forest Service, Forest Service.
Well, I would just, I, I think we should verify that there's no private land, I don't believe there is, so. Think it goes around Tollgate Platts, I don't think that's inclusive.
So if I get anything, I'll share.
Sure.
I don't have any private, no.
I'm about ready to decide all this.
I know, I'm about to.
All right, anything further, come before the board, items, information.
There was two, uh, surface water discharge permits, one for biosolids, one for pesticide. Did anybody take the time to go to the site, see where these are at? Is this something that we should send to our natural resource committee, so they could look at it?
I can't remember if I sent those or not, perhaps so.
Okay, I think we should, they could take a glance at them, if they see something, they could just let us know. I know the other one was for war, if I've seen it, but I haven't looked at these two, I will. Because the thirty days is coming up, if we're gonna comment on it. I'm a little worried about the pesticide one, more than the biosolids.
Anything further? Mr. Jennings? Commissioner Flanagan?
I'm not smart.
Commissioner's asleep. All right.
Twenty thirty-three.
I would make a motion, or I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, you're adjourned.
Thank you, Aldrin.